City Council, Councilmember Clayton.
Here.
Councilmember Kendall.
Here.
Councilmember Warner.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Here.
Mayor Moore.
Here.
Could we please all rise for a silent prayer or a moment of reflection, please? Flag salute, I pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As to comply with the open public meetings app, Chapter 231 Public Law 1975, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in the following manner. The annual notice was forwarded to the Asbury Park Press to Coaster Star Ledger on January 6, 2016, and posted in Bolton Board the same day. All notices are on file with the city clerk. Now we're up to items for review, city manager's report on issues raised at prior council meetings.
There are none.
Before we go any further.
I'm going to turn you off when you talk. Yeah, I did.
Before we go any further, everybody says, well, you're the mayor, you can do this, you can do that. Not true. You can do very little as mayor, but one thing you can do is run the agenda. So what I'd like to do is I gave Michael a 30-second heads-up, and so it's not planned or anything, and we do not have the head of DPW, do not have the head of OEM here, but right now we're looking at the 26-inch snowstorm staring us in the face. So instead of going to the agenda that was prepared a week ago before the snow, I'd like to open it up to the public right now if they have any comments, concerns, or criticism constructive, I would hope, as far as the snowstorm. And we're looking to improve. I think we did a good job. Great? No. I don't think there's any town in Monmouth County that did a great job. I think we did a very nice job. I think we have a lot to go. People do not realize when you have snow of 20-some inches, once you get done with the snow, there's a three-to-four-day cleanup. So we're probably like 50 percent minimum through this storm, and we have two to three more days of cleanup to go. So we're not in denial, it's full transparency. There's been a lot of people with typo fingers bashing us and criticizing the city, which I think is wrong, instead of saying, here's a good suggestion. What do you suggest? And so if anybody would like to get up to the microphone now and speak about this, what they consider we did wrong, what they thank us for doing right, or whatever, we'll open it up to the public now, and at the end we'll open it again once we get through the agenda. But I thought there was going to be 100 people here tonight like lynching us, and nobody's here. So I guess maybe we did do a good job, which I appreciate, and again, I think we did do it. I think Bill, the new Bill McClave, head of DPW, Garrett Garberson, Kevin, Michael, the entire staff did a very good job. Mistakes, absolutely. Mistakes can be corrected. So again, if anybody would like to be heard of the microphone, we'll open it up now. You're still limited to three minutes.
Just my evaluation.
Can you just state your name and address?
Oh, Tracy Rogers.
Thanks.
Monroe Avenue. My 18 years' experience with some of these type of issues. Staging of some of the snow from the plows as to how they inch out to the street needs to be evaluated.
I didn't hear what you said. Say the answer.
It's how they stage the snow after this plow is put out to the corners, because it also creates dangerous situations. I've also talked extensively, just happened, I was going over some stuff this weekend. Because of the equipment that you guys have, you're not capable of sustaining. So what you did is what you're going to be able to deal with. You know, so much snow, actually being by the beach, in certain stages, most of that snow could have been picked up and put into the ocean, but you don't have the equipment to do that. EPA gives you a regulation of less than 24 hours, once that snow is hit, you can pick it up, throw it into the water. It's safe. After that, it becomes dirty. I mean, but because this town is limited, but you do have some resources, which I'm going to reach out to the city manager about, which I think is a thing where you can get more equipment and resources to actually have, jointly with other towns, created a better objective result for Asbury. But more important is really watching how the plows are handling, putting it out there, and also communication with the residents in more visible situations or street cleaning, and how it's going to go. I mean, a full, more detailed plan has to be laid out, but with the resources that you have and a limited supply of equipment, you did what you did. Thank you.
I sincerely thank you, because I figured that to be constructive criticism and something we're looking forward to go forward in the future to correct any mistakes. And Tracy, thank you.
Tracy, you said you had 19 years of experience. Experience of what?
18, I'm working on it. I'm working on it. It's open. I don't know about it. It's too west of the office.
Okay. Jim?
Jim Henry, 14 Sixth Avenue. I'd like to make some observations about the snow and snow removal. There's been a lot of posting on Nextdoor about complaints dealing with snow and that type of thing, but I wonder if those same people who are complaining are the ones who are going out and shoveling out their cars and throwing the snow out into the street instead of back the other way, away from the curb. I saw the city yesterday, or day before, I forget which it was, but anyway, they were out with their plows. They're trying to go down the street, people were blocking the plows with their cars, throwing the snow into the street. Why does the city put up with that? You have a situation where you have ordinances, everybody else, every other city, Hoboken, for instance, which has much more narrow streets than Asbury Park, they don't put up with that kind of nonsense. DPW can't do their job. They're out there, they're working, and people dig their cars out, they diagonal park instead of parallel parking where they're supposed to, where parallel parking is permitted. Why doesn't our police department get out and issue summonses for cars who are not being moved so that the streets can be plowed? We have mechanism for it, but we don't use it. And I just can't understand people complaining about what DPW does or doesn't do. They're out there busting their back through the night, I don't know how many hours they work straight, but these guys, you know, everybody thinks plowing snow is very easy. You know, get out there and try it sometime, you know, when the temperature's down around 25 degrees and it's 1:00 in the morning, and you've been up since two days before. I just think that the guys in DPW ought to be commended for what they've done, and I think the rest of the city ought to give them a little more support in permitting them to do their job. I think everybody would come out with a lot better result than what we've seen, and I can't fault these guys for what they've done. Thank you.
Again, I thank you, and I think that's the type of feedback we want, and again, anybody's not here tonight, they can watch this on AP-TV, and come Wednesday night and have their piece at that time. And again, we are not perfect. Nobody said this was a perfect cleanup. We've made mistakes intentionally? Hell, no. I think they did a great job under the circumstances. Again, this was a lot of snow. Jim, I saw you today shoveling your, Amy's going to kick me.
No, no, because I'm going to go after you, so.
I shoveled in your driveway this afternoon, because I was riding around the city, and bothering the city manager, can we do this, can we do that? Because in our former government, that's all I can do. I cannot like say, take this plow, put it here. I wanted to today, but I couldn't do that. But it's the feedback like that, and I agree, we have to look at the enforcement issue. I think we found out today, we don't have an ordinance to get people like from the Deal Lake Towers putting all the snow onto 8th Avenue. So I mean, it would probably fall under public safety, we go with that, or state statutes. We cannot correct mistakes unless they're brought to our attention. Mistakes were made, we're looking to correct them and make everybody happy. You always hope as DPW, your first storm is like two inches, so everything breaks down. Our first storm, after the hottest winter in America, was 20-some inches. So yes, stuff was not used last year, so some pieces of equipment did break down. Again, I think we did a good job, and can it be improved? Absolutely, and we will improve it with hindsight and the input of the public. Thank you, Amy.
Yeah, so I'm just going to say a couple of things.
Okay, Jim, go ahead.
By no stroll down Main Street, I bet you there's two dozen cars parked in the right-hand lane.
Don't tell Pam that. Road diet.
She's not here for that.
Okay.
So I'm going to just say a couple of things. Back in 2010, we had less snow that fell on Asbury Park. During that time, nobody could get out for three to five days. The reason I know nobody could get out, because I created maps on Facebook and had everybody email me where their maps were, because City Hall was silent, and nobody knew what streets you could take to get out, so I missed several court dates. So I specifically remember 2010 pretty well, because I got in trouble for missing court dates by judges. Having said that, I agree with John, it was a good job. Our DPW workers were out for like 36 hours straight, which I think is, you know, fantastic, kudos to them. Do we still need plows going down the streets? Yeah. John was out this weekend, you know, most of the council members were out with either Kevin Cuddy or Bill from DPW driving through the streets to see what they looked like.
And Garrett.
And Garrett. So we were out, we were looking, the majority of the streets I saw were passable. Am I going to say that they were fantastic? No. I drove through the waterfront, through Southwest, up Third. What I will say, and again, this is just my observation, is on Third Ave, and I'm not sure how we communicated so well with Third Ave, maybe it's because, I don't know why we communicated well with Third Ave, but Sunday morning, Third Ave dug all their cars out, they moved them to the other side of the street, and within a few hours, the side of the street that they had all moved their cars was plowed, the plows came down, pushed all the snow that was many, many feet out in, and then this morning, everybody moved their car back, and then the plows came down the other side of the street. So clearly, we didn't do a good job in communications, and I know the mixed-soul message was a little bit confusing to people, I get that, but it worked on Third Ave. I walked to Second Ave today, and it didn't work on Third Ave. We either, Second Ave, we either didn't communicate to the people on Second Ave what to do, or for whatever reason, they couldn't get their cars out. So on Second Ave, every car is diagonally parked, right, because they dug out and they squeezed their car back in. So what I will say is the even odd side of the street worked on Third, not saying it would work everywhere in the city, it worked on Third, Third got plowed, and it's a pretty wide street, so now both sides of the street are plowed. And the other thing that people don't know is that cars were stranded all over the city. So one of the reasons heck is it, I don't know if, I hope it's still not a disaster, but was a disaster for so long, because we had abandoned cars by Heck and Bird. We had tow companies that weren't responding to us. So the police department, we called them to tow cars, and let alone giving a ticket. Jim, they weren't even coming. They weren't coming to Asbury to tow cars out of thoroughfares. So, you know, I think we learned a lot from this storm. I think we learned how to do better. If anybody read the news, Newark was a disaster, and we're not the only city who was a disaster. If anyone has Facebook, every friend I have in Long Branch was complaining about Long Branch, Wanamasa, Neptune. So again, like absolutely open for constructive criticism, just recognize this was a blizzard, right? It wasn't a snowstorm, and it dropped a tremendous amount of snow. And so what I think we can improve is obviously our snow plowing practices and better ways to communicate with the public, which, you know, again, you could have been more specific, and we should have got the word out earlier. That's my rant, for now.
Amy, you just answered some questions that people on 4 or 5 was asking me. Relatively new people, they've only been there maybe half a year, and they're not exactly up to date with how we go about, or DPW go about finding roads. And they just want to know, how can we have better communication with them? So that's, and I put some ideas in the head, and I'll be talking to the committee about that, and we just have to work together. And I just tell them, just have a little patience, you just got here, you know, and this storm took us all by surprise, and just hang in there and do the best you can, because we're studying thinking about this, we're not going to just give up on this.
I was just going to say, this was the perfect storm. In addition to the storm, our website was down, so we weren't able to communicate as we would like to and give out information about alternate parking when you're parking for the snow and snow removal. So there is so much that we could have done better, that we will do better, and I would just like to ask the public to stay a little patient and know that we have not forgotten what we're supposed to do, it's just sometimes it's more difficult than we expect it to be, and it will be better in the future.
Yeah, I would just say to Jim's point, I don't think the two things that we're dealing with are mutually exclusive. The guys worked really, really hard, everybody worked their butts off, and thank everybody for that. That doesn't mean we did like a perfect job, right? We can always improve, and I just think the idea is to move forward knowing that we did the best we can, and that we're going to try to do better next time. And one of the reasons that, I know on my block in Third, there's lots of reasons why it works on my block, but I have a guy on my block, and he knocks on every door, and it's not me, he knocks on every door, and he tells everybody to move their car, move their car, move their car. So as I was leaving tonight, he was getting everybody out of their house, moving everybody over, and the plow was coming down, and then everybody's moving back to the other side of the street for tomorrow. So it doesn't work everywhere, and we have to come up with maybe some different solutions in different parts of towns, but on certain streets, there's a possibility for it to work. But again, it's not going to, that's not going to work everywhere, and the key thing is just moving forward and learning from this one.
Well, the more we spread the word, like Amy said, it worked on Third. It works on Fourth with my block. Everybody went out and did the same exact thing. It worked on Third with your block, so hopefully we can spread the word and get everybody to do the same thing, and every block won't do it. And I'll tell you one thing, I'm old, and this was the heaviest snow I ever shoveled in my life. This was a heavy, heavy snow. So as heavy it was to shovel, and I shoveled it three times, and every time I looked back out the window, I was like, how can there be more? And there was more. So it was a very heavy, I mean, my back is still hurting, so Jim, you're a little bit older than me, God bless you, too, but I mean, it was a heavy, and you live on a corner, Amy lives over, everybody's, oh, you're lucky, you got a corner lot. No, you got two sidewalks to shovel. So sometimes we're not lucky. But again, appreciate everybody's input, looking for more. We will correct any mistakes and move forward as a united community looking to make Asbury Park better. With that being said, nobody else wants to get to the microphone, we'll go to the agenda. And again, I-
I just have one question, ask John or Mike. Do we get outside help?
We have hired, we've hired two companies to bring in front-end loaders to help us remove the snow, because when you get this type, I mean, I knew on Saturday when it snowed, we were going to have to bring in outside contractors to move it from downtown to move it from residential. Deal Lake Drive gets backed up, eventually we're going to have to move it from the beach front and other areas to get the city up and going. And to move it, you need loaders, and you need, which the city owns one loader, and it's very old, and you need also trucks to truck it away, because you cannot just keep on piling it up to its 100 feet. So we'll probably have to, we've hired three loaders, they're working part-time, as far as Michael and the Bill McClave's directions, and we're opening up more and more every day. They did a good job this afternoon in the northeast section. So again, the main thing, though, that really irks me is like, people get on Nextdoor, people get on other issues, Facebook, everything, say blah, 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 and I'm like, did you call City Hall? Did you call DPW? No, why should I? Because they don't know unless you call them. So please, please, everybody, call DPW, call the city manager's office, you will get a response, and it will be addressed. But we are not mind readers, so if a street like heck is bottomed out and needs fixing, soon as we get that call, a truck is diverted there as soon as possible. That's it. Jim, did you want to say?
I was just going to say, John, each year goes by, the snow gets heavier.
I thought that, but no, this was the heavy one.
Well, it was very light and fluffy when it first came down, but when it turned to sleep and rain, it really absorbed all that moisture, and it was very heavy.
And I was lucky, all those years that I was working for the city, my wife and daughter did the sidewalk, so maybe those years I didn't know how heavy it was. Again, okay, thank you, go to the agenda.
All right, we're on to special event application. Alicia.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we have three applications for your consideration. First one is the ARC Walk and 5K Run, which will be held on Saturday, April 9, from 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM. The walk and run will take place on the boardwalk and around Convention Hall, not through Convention Hall. And the event, they're having an after-party, which will be held in Convention Hall, not Bradley Park. Any questions? Next, we have a Love Run sponsored by The Beer Garden, which will be held on Sunday, February 14. This will be held on the sidewalk, weather permitting. And lastly, we have a request from the center to use a city date to hold their fundraiser at Convention Hall.
Question. The Levisloth Love Run, it says that they want a street closing?
Actually, it's going to be on the sidewalk. They did one on New Year's Day, and it was just held on the sidewalk around Wesley Lake, so they would do the same thing again. If it says a street closing, that's a mistake. Yeah, they're not going to be closing any streets.
Well, you're in there, Alicia, we have to deal with the streets, huh?
Oh, please, give us good news.
All the hardware's fixed. Now there's an issue with the sign not communicating with City Hall. It's an IP conflict, which Onsite, Verizon, and the sign company all have to get together to solve. One or two parties on the phone, or even here, didn't fix it, they all have to get together. So Alicia's been trying to get everyone to fix it. Hardware works fine, we can actually manually change it, and I was going to say, let's do that, but that involves taking off four panels and putting them back on, and we're not going to take off four panels and put them back on, and then change the sign. So hopefully next week or so, we can get this settled, hopefully.
If they say they can't get to it because of the snow, use the front-end loader, knock away the snow. I mean, I don't want to hear that as an excuse, why they can't be-
This is actually just three or four people sitting at a desk, talking, and trying to get their schedules to come.
Is there any leverage we have over them? Is there anybody we can call to help?
No, because it's technical, it's, there's an IP conflict going on somewhere.
Okay. As soon as is possible is appreciated.
And I guess my question here, is this the same issue we had before?
No, this is a new one.
It's a new one? Because that was what we were told last time, is that it's not communicating with City Hall.
Well, we figured out that one. If you remember right around when I started, the sign would go off, and-
Oh, no, this was like a year ago, and it feels like the same thing, so I'm just wondering if these people could like come up with like a way so we don't have to have all four people every time it happens.
Well, the city, which we found out last week, has a dynamic IP address there, it should be static. And once you get a static IP address, you have to solve all those problems. So we have to upgrade the IP address, the line, and then do some port forwarding. I know I don't bother with details, but we know what's wrong, just now it's fixed up.
Okay.
Not us, but everyone else.
Thank you.
Okay, we're now on to presentations. Michelle Alonso regarding amendments to the Springwood Avenue redevelopment plan.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and public. Before you tonight, requesting a referral to the planning board to amend the Springwood Avenue redevelopment plan. The primary purpose for amending the redevelopment plan is anticipation of our transit village application to the state. Any areas we want to have as transit village designation has to be in a redevelopment area with transit-friendly zoning. Currently, a swath of Memorial Drive is not in any redevelopment area, and it's zoned light industrial. When we had our preliminary meeting with the state, they found the zoning for that zone problematic. The easiest way to fix that is to amend it into the Springwood Avenue redevelopment area. In addition, since we were amending the boundary, I reached out to the housing authority and asked if they would like their parcels in a redevelopment area, and also to be part of the transit village designation, and they said yes. I did put in the memo some of the benefits of extending the boundary and how I am extending the boundary. I'm extending it not as an area in need of redevelopment, but as part of the citywide area in need rehabilitation designation. So the redevelopment plan will differentiate the two different designations. Under an area in need of rehabilitation, you have all the powers as if you're in area in need of redevelopment, except for condemnation. And normally, you can't give a long-term tax payment, but if you are in an urban enterprise zone and you're in a redevelopment plan, the council has the ability to grant long-term tax payment. But the main purpose for my including these properties is developing the boundary for the transit village application. Do you have any questions?
So we're doing this, just so I'm clear on the purpose of doing it, I read through the memo, is because it's going to allow more land in the Springwood Avenue redevelopment area?
Right, so the zoning, actually, Memorial Drive is zoned light industrial. So the few parcels I'm proposing that be included, the zoning would change from light industrial to mixed-use.
Okay.
And it's not that far stretched, because actually, that area, Memorial, most likely would be to our benefit to switch over to commercial and housing.
Right, and the idea of the transit village is to have as much mixed-use residential by your transit hub?
Correct.
Right.
Okay, that makes sense.
Are you happy with how far you're expanding it, or should go further because of the usage?
Well, I kind of did this for the property, for properties that I knew, and knew would have an immediate benefit, because on the northern end of the boundary, there's already a zoning board approval for 114 units. So I, right, so I ended the boundary there. I also included in the proposed boundary across the street, the shopping center and the city-owned parcel that's north of the shopping center. I really didn't go beyond thinking about the other properties, except I did not include an existing housing authority property, because that is just going to be in the future rehabbed, it's not going to be a tear-down.
Was that in the village?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Now, the only thing I see, now, after it comes to us, it goes to the planning board?
Yes.
What happens then?
So then they determine whether the amendments are in conjunction with the current master plan, and then they refer back to council with a recommendation for a council to adopt it or not adopt it. And then it's an ordinance, so it's two readings of the municipal council. Any more questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're on to review of agenda items for Wednesday's regular meeting.
I didn't review them yet, so I'll email them to you, Michael.
Thank you.
For the same.
Email first.
Yes, it does.
Does it?
Yes, it does.
45 is at the afternoon.
Oh.
That's on at 2.
Are they all going to pile in, then?
No, one from last week was lost.
They're lost. Yes, there's some good ones from it.
Oh, yeah?
I copied everybody on personal accounts, but-
Anybody got questions? I have. Somebody wants to go first? Go ahead.
Resolution 2016-62, and this is just a question. We have an assessment invoice, and this is something that we do every year, we share the expenses of Deal Lake Commission with-
Correct. And well, six other municipalities, and it's based on, it's based on how much land you have around the lake, not as far as, which it should be based on, my opinion should be based on the amount of water coming into the lake, which, so-
It's based on frontage, not watershed area.
Right. But yes, and the 11,000's been steady for, I would say, in the last three to four years minimum.
And what does it do?
It gives them money to run their operations, to hire their engineer, to hire Princeton Hydro, and Princeton Hydro, Vaca is the engineer, Princeton Hydro is their consultant as far as-
Right, so they, for example, last year, they used the, they sprayed for the pond weed.
Right.
Right, where that was the issue with the Wesley Lake Commission, they were looking for money from the municipality, so I mean-
It funds their budget.
It funds their budget, they do things like that. Right, and then some of that money goes for a grant writer, I guess, but they got their deal, lake dredging money.
Right.
So...
And this is just about the transportation center.
Yeah.
When I look at Exhibit A, it has a number of locations that we're looking to rent.
Yes, that might change.
That rendering is an old render from, I was going to say, like, six years ago, when the city put it out to lease, and nobody bid on anything except A and B. So I talked to Fred this afternoon, because Fred said he couldn't make the site, so, Barry's here, Rita, Rita, how you doing? I don't know, Rita's been sick. Yes, and we haven't gotten any updates, so I don't know how Rita's doing, so Rita, hope you're watching. So, and I even said, like, if you look where C is, C can never be read it, because that's where we put the wagon from the Asbury Park press. So it's going to be a mayor and council decision, do you want to put out, A and B is a definite, do you want to put out three, C through I, whatever the numbers are?
They would recommend just putting them out, so it happens, there's no way to track them.
Because the last time they put this out, they got no bids on anything except A and B.
Okay, that's actually being advised.
Well, we're all, let me ask a couple of questions. And don't need this tonight, and obviously, no. A and B, if we can get before Wednesday, what did they pay the past three years? And there is language that I wanted at all the concessions, and I would say, I'm hoping the entire council, one would be, that there would be one year of escrow money held in account, which I...
Right, it's going to change the draft RFP, and the amount is what they're paying to that, plus a little bit more to cover the utility.
And I also asked, I, the council, I believe, asked that there would be also language in there, I know Fred talked about it, that the potential winner of the lease would pay the closing cost to the attorney, because if we lease something for $250, and it costs our attorney $500 to draw, and I'm making up numbers, $500 to draw up the lease, we just blew taxpayers' money. So if somebody wants to lease something that cheap, they should pick up the closing. I call them closing fees.
Yeah, right, so you have that.
Okay, thank you.
In addition, we talked about adding a certain percentage to cover their cost for power.
Yeah, we added that.
Okay.
I wasn't going to, I knew that already.
Is this saying that we rejected the bids?
We're recommending rejecting the parking consultant bids, substantially changing.
I'm going to ask Joe to weigh in on that. You've been on the park today, that means we're thrown away.
Right, so I've been meaning to send an email out to the crew that worked on that, because then two of them, two of them are here. The first, they're hearing of it, which is not how it was meant to go. Well, I didn't see my, I didn't go through the package yet. They told, you told them, okay. So, what, there was a couple of technical things, I think, that were the problem, and like they said, it wasn't necessarily always comparing apples to apples, I believe. So, my understanding of it, and we can talk about it some more, is the hard work is kind of done with looking at the different groups and really taking a look at what they have to offer, and their professionalism, and their calls, and their references and all that. This is just a process to get our ducks in a row, and make sure that when we get, whatever new ones come in, they're apples to apples, so that we can do a tighter analysis, because I think we just needed some cleaning up of the language. Is that accurate, Michael?
Yeah, the RFP itself is variable put together, but as I've seen over the last couple of months with the discussions, it can be tighter and better, substantial changes. I want to thank everyone in the parking unit for the work they've been doing. Their RFP is very well pulled up.
They did a tremendous amount of work.
I didn't know it was going to work.
Countless, countless hours, and calling up and listening to people on three, four-way phone calls and everything, that's why, Joe, I was, in the presidency, I sent you an email late this afternoon, saying, again, with the snow, everybody was late going through their jet. Are you for this? If you're for it, I'm for it, but as long as, like, we're not thrown out, all the good work done.
No.
Right, yeah, we'll talk later, because I haven't had a chance to go through everything. It was a busy weekend for everybody, but, yeah, I mean, this is a little bit, we have a little time to talk about it, but we'll talk afterwards.
You might as well go and ask.
Yeah, all right. The letter from New Jersey American Water.
Can I, can I just maybe interrupt you a second? We were handed two informations, items for information, EBI Consulting and New Jersey American Water, and I could read both of them 15 times and not have a clue what they said. I don't know if that's what Yvonne's trying to say or not, but, so, EBI has to do with Brian Sherbken, Istar, and something, site remediation, so I don't know, why is that coming to us?
We always copy it off.
What, is it something we should be concerned about or not?
No, certainly not.
Okay, and New Jersey American Water, they say they're raising rates as far as sewage treatment plants and everything, is that something we should be concerned or not? If it's something I should be concerned about, don't send it.
They're saying that they're raising the rate 0.49 percent.
Okay, what does that equate to dollars to the city of Asbury Park?
It should be on there if we can...
Again, Michael, I could read this 30 times and not understand it, because I'm not an accountant.
And that was my question, how does this affect us?
Because they'll give a breakdown on the hour.
Okay, how does it affect us dollars? We're not looking for that answer tonight.
And we received a speed summary report about Ridge Avenue, but no recommendation, so...
The speed reports that you got, there's also another one done, I think, on the board just recently, show that everyone is within the speed limit, as requested from during previous council meetings. That, that report is going to come from me in a week or two, when we had the other streets, but so far, everyone has fallen within the speed limit, except for each time on the ridge, there was someone driving 60, which is the anomaly, but everyone has been at or below the speed limit.
So we're not going to do anything, is that what you're saying?
There's nothing to do if people are driving below the speed limit.
Except catch the anomaly with radar, you know, and that. We'll continue radar, when needed.
And last, and just clarification, the school board has passed a resolution, they're going to change the date of the election for the school board, so it doesn't coincide with the general election, but happens in April?
Yeah.
Which also means my office would have to be open the entire time.
And you build a board of it?
I don't know if I can do that.
You try.
That's the answer.
Joe, you have any?
No, I haven't emailed.
Maybe he says tomorrow, says you guys do on the agenda?
We're all calling.
I don't know.
Don't trust email yet.
We're on Matters by Council?
No, I have questions on that.
Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot about you.
A lot of people did. 2016-60, I asked to be taken off the consent item and put on a separate item, just because if we're declaring something an emergency, I don't think it should be buried with a bunch of other ones. 2016-63, this is for us to go after bid on certain proposals for various activities, which I have no problem with, but can mayor and council have input on this before we go out to bid? Because, for examples, like recycling, where the last time we went out to bid, we just went out to bid with, like, the way we're doing it now. So can we, it was like alternate A and alternate B, so I mean, before we go out to bid, can we see what we're, the actual writing is, and then we, the policymakers, have input on it?
Of course.
Okay, well, you said, of course, it hasn't happened in the past, so a lot of things are new to us. Okay, this is the shared service agreement for the police and fire dispatch. Question, not looking for it now, unless you know, what was the cost in 2015?
Off the top of my head, I can't say for sure, it was in a neighborhood of $650,000. This latest agreement calls for no increase.
Okay, it's a, okay, how about future years? It's a four-year contract, so is there going to be no increase in the next three years? Or is there a max increase? Is there a percentage? How are they going to decide the increase in future years, if we go where the four-year contract?
I don't believe there's any increase in the four years, but I will get a concrete answer for you on that tomorrow.
Thank you. Talking about shared services, again, just another thing that went wrong with the storm. We had a shared service agreement with Bradley Beach to put down calcium, liquid calcium chloride on our streets, and we found out at the OEM meeting on Friday, their truck broke down, so that shared service is no good. Can we actively pursue another shared service agreement to either put down calcium chloride liquid, or a brine substance like other towns and counties do? And if that means that the county does it, it's to our benefit, because if you look at the road of Memorial Drive, the county did, and look at our Memorial Drive, it's night and day. And it could be relatively cheap compared to the man-hours we're paying now in the future, so if we could...
I thought we had a truck that did that at DPW.
Years ago.
I'm not recent.
It used to be the Warder truck, you used to order stuff, it's broken down, that's where we went to the shared service with Bradley Beach, their truck broke down, but it's something, we were very lucky this storm, as much as, we were very lucky that very few power outages, Jim Marky from JCPN was here, I think he left, he's gone to like many council meetings, he's the area representative, he was in contact with me, Kevin, Michael, all through the storm, kept us updated on the one power outage, major one on 1400, there were a couple on the east side, but overall, we were lucky that way, we were very lucky, no major flooding whatsoever, and our crew did a great job as far as like rebuilding the berms, straightening things out lower in the lake, so we, as much as like, we did some things wrong, we did many things perfectly right. So we forget about those because of all the typos, typists busting our backs, whatever. But again, if we can look into like a shared service to get somebody to brine or something on our streets, because it is a big difference. I know it could be a little bit of money upfront, but it would save us a lot in the backend. Two, this is under ordinances, and 2016-03, and I guess that's Cindy Moore, you, I guess all this is clarifies it?
Yes.
Okay, and it makes it easier for everybody, us, the state, the borrower, which is everybody?
Right. Right. Yeah, it was a request that came out, but I checked with the chief of police and passed it through our city attorney, and it is, it just makes it a little bit easier, and it's sense, it makes sense to do it, instead of listing every individual position, you know how positions change, you know, just the names of them, so it's just easier and makes it easier.
Just out of curiosity, who's this, I read it, I've got, who's this guy Donald, and who's he work for?
Uh, he...
Is he a consultant for the liquor industry?
Yeah, he is.
Okay.
Yeah, he is, but he used to work for the ABC, and obviously, if I didn't get an agreement, I wouldn't have passed it on, you know?
No, I read that, that's all I have on the agenda.
Matters by Council?
Jesse?
Well, just that one. Over the weekend, I've seen what a few calls from Family General on Main Street, they're having a lot of problems with people standing outside the building, begging for money, and I asked them to call, Deputy Chief, so I don't want to talk to them, but always to talk to Sergeant Gallow about that, and he said, they send cars around, the cars don't stay as soon as the cars leave, the people leave. So he called me up, because he was frustrated, he said he was about to go outside with a baseball bat. I say, have you called the city manager? Have you called the chief of police? Have you called the mayor? And all his answers was, no.
I'm going to tell people to call the mayor too, so call me, call the mayor.
The guy said, yeah, he gave me the baseball bat.
So I get in my car, and I go over there, and he's about 12:00, pretty people standing around taking for money, and he asks, what can we do about that? So I said, I'll bring in a good counsel and see what we can do. That's every day, every day, throughout the day, and he said, it's certainly his business, people afraid to come in, people afraid to go out, so he had to walk them out the door. That's all.
Joe? No? You're right there.
I'd just like to say thank you. I know we've gotten a lot of complaints about the snow, but for me, I was unable to dig myself out, and I'd like to thank my neighbors who came and dug me out, they took care of the car, and I'm sure throughout the city, neighbors have been helping neighbors and helping seniors and those who weren't able to do it themselves. So I'd like to say thank you for being such a great city and a neighborly city.
Thank you. Just to switch gears, and we were talking about parking a little bit, but before the snowstorm, and for months now, the biggest complaint I've heard about parking, it wasn't what we've changed as far as the policy, it wasn't as far as RFPs, it wasn't anything, is about the machines do not work. The machines do not work, and I agree with them, 100%, the machines do not work. So we have to look into it, and some of my questions are, number one, why don't they work? What did we spend on maintenance in 2015?
$100,000.
When is their contract up, and what options are available to correct this problem as soon as possible? Because we can, we can introduce all the best policies in the world, but if the machines don't work, it doesn't solve the problem.
I actually spoke to the gentleman last week, and he started giving me his sales pitch, and he said, what have you been hearing about the machines? And I said, they don't work. I said, I'm tired of coming, people coming to council meetings complaining about them. His next words were, well, I don't want to throw anyone under the bus, but it's Gene Dallow and your staff's fault. And I said, I don't appreciate that, not that nicely I said that, and he said that they've given the city the directions on how to maintain the machines. And my response to that was...
And why did we pay you $100,000?
I said, then what do we pay you for? And I said, one of the other complaints that Gene has stated is that you don't have parts. And he said, that's not entirely true, we have 95% of our parts. And I said, 95% is unacceptable when you're trying to create an atmosphere that things are working. The next part of the conversation stemmed around what the parking committee has recommended, moving to license plate meters, moving to the future, and he said, well, 55% give or take of our machines can handle it, the other 45% would have to be upgraded. My response to that was, well, why wouldn't we upgrade them all so that they all work at the same time, and have a vendor that actually stood behind their product, and he pooh-poohed that answer aside, and again blamed that it was maintenance. So my response to him was, we're going out again for the parking committee, for the parking RFP, we're going to substantially change the requirements as per the contracts law, and he's more than welcome to bid on it, but it's going to change what has to be done, and there's going to be much more accountability moving forward on the contract, the existing contract. At the end of the day, he came out and said that because the city's not maintaining the meters to their standards, that they are failure, and then he gave an example that they can see, there's an online system that says when the meters are down. So they'll get a call from one of the special police officers saying meter 48 is down, and then they'll come out and they'll find that this part's broken, and that the special police officer should actually tell them what part is broken. And then I responded with, so you don't look at the meter before you come out here to see if there's multiple parts, what part is broken? And he said, no, that's not our role. And I said, that's an incredibly poor business plan, that you're going to show up and drive out here without knowing what's broken, when you have the ability to see that online. And he denied that. So the company seemed to, they stand behind their product, but they don't want to do anything to make the product work better. And that's part of what we need to substantially change in the RFP, is there needs to be standard, you need to be out here within four hours, six hours, you must have... You must have parts within twenty-four hours, it's gonna be a reduction of contract costs, those are the changes that I want to throw in there. The RFP is fantastic, but I want to hold someone's feet to the fire. We've also talked internally about how to manage the contract. Myself and Mr. Garcia, CFO, have, have bandied about, I spoke to the councilman about it, about having someone in the finance department manage the contract. Because that was also, how do you manage that? And that should, we should be able to bring someone in-house at a much affordable rate than what the contract, the RFP responses were. They were looking at six figures for that, but to manage the contract doesn't need to be six figures. So that's gonna be tweaked also, but from my initial discussion with our existing contracting company, I was not very happy.
Thank you for looking into it, thank you for the update, and let's continue ahead.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's the reason for the RFP and why everybody works so hard on it, is because it's just not working. And we need, we need those pieces.
Not to throw anybody a bus, under the bus, but, you know, that's priceless. Anybody else?
Motion to adjourn?
No, 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 no. No, hold tight, we're up to the matter, uh, matters by city manager. Request for proposals discussion?
We've already discussed it.
Website issues?
It's working.
Abandoned property update? No abandoned properties?
There's, there's thirty abandoned properties. Under the existing ordinance, the notification gets published, but then there's no next step. So I was talking to the director of the Department of Mr. Ewing about what the options are under the state law, this is a policy decision for the council. Some of them are late on taxes, so we can go to tax sale after the thirty days and all the notification. Some we can force to do by doing them ourselves, places lean on, leads on them. We could just wait and see if they're doing things, but over the next month or so, there has to be some thoughts from everyone and some discussions on what our next step is gonna be, because once we publish the list, it sort of just stops. So where does everyone want to move with, you know, moving forward with it?
I'd say tax link, yeah.
Well, if they have.
I'd like to hear all the recommendations and, I, options and repercussions of each one.
If they're late on their taxes, going to tax sale would be the easiest way. Because that's gonna force them to do something, or we take control of the property, you know, we own it. The other mechanism is for the city to, to do the work, have the judge order it, and then we link the property for the cost of the work, or a private contractor to do it. Those are the two best options that we think right now are, are up there. But Mr. Ewing and myself both think, once they start that thirty-eight process, you'll see a lot of people start doing work.
Right, that was the idea, but I thought, I agree with the deputy mayor, I think the best option would be.
The latter would require, would require more resources from us in the tax link, right?
Yeah, if, if they're, only if they're lenient on any portion of their taxes. But I think one of the options though is to, is to put out, if, if we get to that thirty days, we can also put out a big, big bid for that and set, and bid contractors to bring these houses up to code, so we're not doing the work ourselves.
But we'd be paying for the work and then trying to get it back from deadbeat landlords.
But that's why you have, is why you place a lien on. I mean, it's.
And then after you place the lien, isn't then, do you go to a tax sale eventually?
You play.
Eventually.
And you can do it immediately if they're on that list, so we can do the work at the, the house up to code and go right out to tax sale.
Right, but you can't go right to tax sale unless they haven't paid any of their taxes.
They have, yeah.
Right, so then if they're, haven't paid taxes, I say go right to tax sale, not get the work done and then go to tax sale.
And you don't, you don't have to get an answer, I, I don't expect an answer right now, do you know how many of the thirty properties are behind in any of their taxes?
It was maybe like four, we were looking at, it wasn't many.
Okay, so then twenty-six we have to.
Figure out what to do.
Okay.
That's coming up in February, March, and also I did want to announce one other thing. EEP called me and they are going to fund seventy-five percent of the, the cost of the Wesley Lake Outfall project. So we'll be on the hook for about eight grand, and they're gonna run the project for us, so we don't have to do anything but pay them.
And what is the seventy-five percent, what does that translate to approximately in terms of dollars?
Thirty-two thousand.
Wow, that's great, good job.
Sorry, choking.
You okay?
Yeah, I'm fine. At this time, can I take a motion, open a meeting to the public?
Move it.
All favor? All opposed? Does anybody like, from the public like to speak? Please state your name and address for the record, you have three minutes, and while you know the rest.
Tracy Rogers, Monroe Avenue. The request to change the Board of Education election. Why would that change? And it does put more cost onto the taxpayers. And the state just actually passed a law the last two weeks that gave a little bit more latitude with the times that a school board election can be made. They can decrease the hours to four to eight, and, or actually change them earlier than what they were. So to keep them in that same prime when all these other elections are going on saves costs. I don't know why we do, why, you know, wouldn't talk to them and figure out why they would actually cause more expenses to go out. Also, with some of the training for the snowplow dryers and other issues, you know, well, I'll set that aside. I, I would call Michael, we'll try to set up some stuff on some things that I saw. Also, I know we just had the storm, but also the project is coming up for that hotel. Can we find out, what are we going to do about the training aspects for the residents so we can get information out and the more time we matter? I think, I think that's it right now.
Yeah, I'm sure we can work the hotel.
Yeah, I, I've spoken with I Star, they're working on their, their plan before they come here for any of their agreements. So right now, they're developing it and they haven't come before the council for any agreement to be approved yet.
For the hotel opening?
So they don't get the hotel without the agreement, without showing us what they're doing with workforce development, Tracy?
When, no, when do they expect to come in, aren't they looking at April opening?
You're talking about the Asbury and they're talking about eleven oh one Ocean?
Yeah, no, I'm talking about the Salvation Army.
Right, so the Asbury, he actually has a workforce develop, we've, everybody up here, I think, has met with him on this issue. And he has, they have a workforce development plan that, you know, they're rolling it out on their, their schedule. But they're gonna coordinate with, with the city, and they have expressed to all of us that it's an important component. They want when people come to visit Asbury Park, they want people from Asbury Park to be sharing, you know, their local knowledge and experience and everything else. So it's a big piece that's.
Development in it, the Asbury, they voluntarily agreed to do. So the Asbury Hotel was first, where they said, we'll do workforce development, we said, okay. And then eleven oh one, we said, you know what, we're gonna start getting that in writing. And it's gonna be a part of the agreement, so, so, I'm sorry, I, all I, I, I'm sorry if I said that in a confusing way.
No, what can we call up on, like, April or May opening? We should be looking at, or just March, having a date for people to go in, you know, with the training or?
They, they have a, a training plan that is supposed to start, I think, in February, and it's gonna be extended over a couple of months. So it's not just one week training, and they just haven't been, they're not ready to roll it out yet, but it sets, it is supposed to start in February. And, and as soon as they're ready to roll it out, they will. But it's not, there is a plan in place that's not gonna be run by I Star specifically, but by the, the person that's running the hotel.
And we've consistently been asking them about it, it's not like we're just letting it go, I, I talked to the city manager last week, and I said, when you meet with Brian Sherbka, ask him about the Asbury Hotel.
Do you have any word about February fifteenth? Can we, like, say let's get something people wanna know?
We'll, we'll wait, we, we will not wait till February fifteenth, the next time, I know, I think we have a meeting Friday, I'll ask the question Friday. What, what's the status and when is it gonna be rolled out? Yeah, so that's no problem, we should stay in contact with them and make sure it doesn't slip through the cracks. As far as the Board of Education, all that was, was the Board of Education sent us.
FYI.
A document, so it was an item of information. They changed their dates of elections until Asbury Park switched, there was two out of fifty-three communities that have them in April, Neptune, I don't know what the other one. But the Board of Education, I guess you can go to their meeting and ask them why they did it.
But it, it is gonna cost us money.
It's gonna cost the tax, yes, it's gonna cost the taxpayers money because the reason the state said everybody go to November was to get a bigger turnout and was to save money where you have one election instead of two elections, so. But again, that's their decision and they adopted, and I, you know, we have no problem with that. They just sent us a nice letter saying we did it. Motion to adjourn?
Well, motion to close first, please.
This group is ready to go home.
Now motion to adjourn.
Move it.